You're watching City Channel 4, your window to our community.
I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for July the 18th, 2017. Roll call.
Botchway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Dickens.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here.
Item two, proclamations. I think no one's here to accept these proclamations, but I'd like to read them anyhow. So, I'll begin with National Disability Voter Registration Week. Whereas in July 2017, people with disabilities and our supporters will celebrate the 26th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and whereas there are over 50 million people with disabilities of all ages living in communities throughout the United States, and whereas the disability community has a critical interest in policies enacted at local, state, and national levels that affect the integration of people with disabilities, young and old, into our communities, and whereas getting the disability community involved in influencing public policies is essential if these policies are to meet the real needs of people with disabilities to live in the community, and whereas voting is one way for the disability community to exert their influence at local, state, and national elections, and whereas there are multiple efforts to develop disability coalitions around the issue of voting, and whereas Rev Up America, Register, Educate, Vote, Use Your Power is a national effort to encourage local and/or state disability community voting coalitions. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, designate the week of July 17th through the 21st as National Disability Voter Registration Week, and encourage Iowa City to increase the political power of people with disabilities while also engaging candidates and the media to recognize the disability community. And I guess I'd like to say I noticed that one other council member indicated he has a disability earlier, and I can tell you I do, so it's important to deal with this kind of stuff, you know? So, I'm proud to read that proclamation. Okay, the next one is Concerns Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was passed on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of individuals with disabilities, and whereas Iowa City, Iowa, affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth for the State of Iowa and embodied in the ADA, the laws of the State of Iowa and ordinances of Iowa City, and whereas numerous organizations in Iowa City work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the ADA, and whereas the 2010 U.S. Census reported that nearly one in five Americans had a disability, and whereas the ADA benefits all Americans as nearly everyone will live with a disability at some point in their lives, and whereas on July 22nd, 2017, an event celebrating the 27th anniversary of the passage of the ADA, celebrating our progress, recommitting to our future, will be held at the Iowa City Ped Mall from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, hereby proclaim July 22nd, 2017, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day, and urge community members to participate in activities that celebrate and honor the spirit of the act. Am I right that Keith or no one else is here to accept these proclamations? Okay, so, moving on. Oh, sorry. Item three, Consider Adoption of the Consent Calendar as Presented or Amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Dickens. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item four, Community Comment for items not on the formal meeting agenda. Comment, and this is an opportunity to speak to us about any item that does not appear on the formal meeting agenda. You have up to not more than five minutes. Please come up, state your name, and welcome. And incidentally, welcome to everybody tonight. I'm surprised anybody's here, given the amount of rain we got just a little while ago, but anyhow, we're all here. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I want to commend you and the members of the council on the adoption of those proclamations. I had a very successful professional career that was basically destroyed when I became afflicted with major depressive disorder, a lot of that being the inability thanks to the Ambassador to China to provide appropriate medical care. That's an aside. That's not actually the reason I'm here. I think you folks have a problem, a big problem. The Police Department is the laziest, most inept group of officers that I've ever encountered in 30 years of working with law enforcement. Example one, in the late summer of 2015, I reported to the Police Department that a gentleman who, up till that time, had been a very close friend of mine, had asked to borrow several hundred dollars. I am in a position where I lent him the money believing it would aid him in his recovery. It became quite apparent after a short period of time that it was a fraudulent transaction that he never intended to pay me. The officer who was sent to my house was a ranked officer, but had attempted to tell me a dishonest interpretation of the theft statute. Now, unless I assume that you are raising people to a higher rank and paying them a higher amount of money who don't know what a theft is, then she may have been accurate, but I just simply find that hard to believe. So, okay, I turn it over to the county's office, attorney's office, of course, they drop the ball. They don't do anything. Then I had a second incident on January 11th this year. Chris Vilhauer, who is somewhat of a supervisor at South Gate Property Management, came to an apartment I rented and stole a very expensive, custom-made chair that went with an oak dining room table, again, of great expense. On the 12th, I reported that to the Police Department. At some point in time, the Police Department called Mr. Vilhauer and decided they would not pursue the matter, but they lacked the courtesy and the fortitude to notify me. So, I had to track it down myself, and they said it was a civil matter. It's a civil matter, and the man admitted that he committed a theft. Why does this become a civil matter? But that's rather a chronic situation in these cases. Duct opposed that to difficulty I encountered with a trailways driver. Now, this is clearly a civil dispute based on a contract of my purchase of a ticket. The driver, I don't drive, I haven't driven for a decade, that's by choice. You have a wonderful system here, and I don't see any reason to waste the money on a car, and I don't. So, I traveled by bus. He was extremely rude. In fact, the carrier ended up settling with me for a few hundred dollars based on his conduct, but the police kicked me off the bus. Now, that's a civil contract, and they turned it into a criminal act when I'm involved, but they don't pursue either act of theft. And I am sufficiently trained in legal matters that I could have written the cases for them and had my one-year-old grandson present them. I mean, they were very simple and straightforward, and the evidence was overwhelmed. What really troubles me most is you don't see my feet, but I'm wearing a $400 pair of shoes. It's not my style. Until last month or so, $400 was probably the total cost of all the footwear I owned. In that left shoe, there is a fixed gear designed to try to keep my foot tightly together so that a fracture can heal without necessity for surgery. Now, there's something of an urban legend that's grown up around the hospital, so they call a police officer in. He indicates to me, or I was situated, I was eating some tuna salad purchased at the hospital in the fourth-floor lounge next to where I received my primary treatment at the digestive disease center. I'm just sitting there, doing nothing. The officer comes in and says, "I'm discharged." And that was the first time I really knew that he was a peace officer only because he wanted to see justice done. I did not realize until that time that he had been admitted to practice medicine by the Board of Medical Examiners and was board-certified in orthopedics, which, of course, he is not. And he placed me at great jeopardy of further injury to this foot, which would necessitate surgery. I simply ask that you provide some relief for the citizens. My clothing selection tonight was of some importance, but the protocol gave way to the heat. When I came back to Iowa City--
Sir, if I could, you've gone well over five minutes. Could you wrap up, please?
Well, when I came back in 2014, I wanted nothing to do than to be Robert Crumbs, Mr. Natural. Just leave, you know, I'll just go around and do my thing. But I made the mistake of wearing sweatpants. And whether you want to believe it or not, this is a very bigoted city based upon income and perception. Someone sees me walking around in sweatpants, and particularly if I carry my lunch in a plastic sack, they think I'm homeless, and they treat me like shit. You've got three other departments the same way, including your city attorney, who will soon be resolved in her ethical behavior with the Iowa Supreme Court. I appreciate your need to limit the comments. I guess I'll have to come back three or four times to discuss the other agencies that are involved. However, please be warned that the library has prohibited me from going in to the library on false accusations. If that order is not released in three days, I will enter the library for the purpose of being arrested and having a public trial exposing the operation of that facility to the--
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Sir, can we get your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you sign in?
On the ADA thing, I apologize.
Okay.
I prefer Jim Weaver. When I came to Iowa City, I often signed up as James, and people took that too seriously, and I'm not really a James, I'm more a Jim. I haven't been a Jimmy since my grandmother passed.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address this? Seeing no one else, we'll move to item five, Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 5A, Rezoning 513 South Riverside Drive. An ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 0.62 acres of land from community commercial CC2 Zone to Riverfront Crossings West Riverfront RFCWR Zone for property located at 513 South Riverside Drive. All right, so there's a sequence we're going to go through here. Basically, in the end, we're going to, I want to get a motion to continue the public hearing to August 1st, and then a motion to defer first consideration to August 1st. But that said, I want to ask if there's any ex parte disclosures that need to be made. Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing.
Move to continue the public hearing to August 1st.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens. Discussion. Hearing none. We need, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Move to defer first consideration to August 1st.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to give, no, what is that? A motion to give first consideration. I don't do that. Discussion, roll call, never mind. Okay, so we'll move to item six. Riverfront Crossings Park Phase Two. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the Riverfront Crossings Park Phase Two project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Julie.
Evening. Fun project to talk about, and fun to talk, if you've been down to the site. They're really moving on phase one right now. So, phase one of the park is well underway. A lot of fun to watch that take shape. So, phase two is the nature play area. This was pulled out of phase one because it has some federal funding involved. We wanted to keep it as its own separate project. We think it'll be the largest nature play area, nature playground area for kids of the State of Iowa, and definitely the coolest and best one, I'm sure. Happening right on the east side of the park, along Ralston Creek. And a couple of things I'll point out, you've seen this before, but there's a creek access area here with limestone steps down into Ralston Creek. There's various different play areas, which I'll hit on in just a little bit, but some of them seem pretty simple, but I think they're going to be so much fun. The center section is a tumble, a tumbling area. So, it's a hill with a tunnel underneath. Kids can explore underneath it, but then they basically go to the top and tumble back down. Sounds very simple.
All right, we can all do it.
Yeah, we all. That grand opening with the bike, you can bike out here and go do that. Separate areas along the site, there'll be an explorer's area for kids to kind of run through and have different obstacles to go through. There'll be a two- through five-year-old area, an older kids' area, some special areas that swings for parents and child to swing together, log slide, different logs and things to go through, sand play area where they can be like an archaeological dig. There'll be a teepee forum, so they can bring things and make it into a teepee for some social play areas. Part of the railroad bridge that's being taken out in phase one will be recycled and used for part of the play structures, and the Saban arches from Saban Elementary School are also going to be used within this play area. So, just quite a few exciting things happening. And here it is on the map of the park happening here on the east side.
All right, fabulous. Any questions for Julie or reactions?
Just excited to see this keep moving. It's going to make great park.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it as well, especially when that bridge opens up. Then I can walk across the bridge with Rockne and go over to the brewery and then back across--
Where's that place?
No further questions? Thank you, Julie. Would anybody else like to address this Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion.
It's going to be a nice feature for the Riverfront Crossings Park, especially, I think it's taking excellent advantage of the fact that it's along Ralston Creek. And the notion, which I think we've talked about, of parks serving as destinations, this one will, I think, really, truly be an activator to this general area of Iowa City, but also I think the reach of it will probably go beyond that. So, it's really nice, really nice to see that.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Your boy will be able to play out there. That'd be fun.
I'm kind of worried about it. A lot of dirty clothes.
Dirt is good.
Okay, item seven, Robert A. Lee Recreation Center Remodeling, 2017. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the Robert A. Lee Recreation Center Remodeling, 2017 project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. Julie?
So, this project looks at some accessibility issues that we have at the Robert A. Lee Rec Center. In our lower-level lobby, we have these two here on the right side, two restrooms, two single-stall restrooms, not accessible for people using wheelchairs. Also, kind of a security issue from how staff can see them versus how the building operates. So, we're going to fix that by making them bigger and changing the entrance location. The stairs, also not ADA compliant at this time because of the railings, and if you've been there, they're just really showing their age. We redid the floors two years ago in the rest of the building, but weren't able to redo the stairs. So, we'll end up with enclosed stairs that look a lot better and function a lot better for the facility. And the final thing that the project will accomplish is the restroom change, which I'll show you on the plans in just a minute, takes away an office that we have right now, right off the gym, Rakisha Harrington's office at the moment. It's not a very conducive office, if you've ever been there, when the gym is busy and lively. I'm not sure. It was once probably the coach's office. It had a shower, it had all those kind of traditional things. So, that's going away, and that means we're going to end up doing some small renovations in our upstairs administrative offices. This window that you see in the bottom right will actually not be there any longer. Our main customer service operations happen at the larger desk down below, and it's been very confusing since we made that change. We want this window open. It's not always staffed. The staff is downstairs. So, we will be closing that off so we can use this for workspaces, have some level of noise control inside the admin offices. Still public access to come in and meet with the different people that have offices in there, but we'll get that closed off. Let me show you that this would be the downstairs area. So, currently, the two restrooms enter from the lobby by the stairs. Here's the stairs going up. What we're going to do is change those, turn them around, so that the two entrances will be directly across from our customer service desk. We'll have them very visible and be able to monitor them pretty closely. They'll become single-stall, non-gender-specific restrooms with family changing or the young child changing areas in them. Behind us, we will have a lactation room, which has been asked for both by staff and by people using the Rec Center building, and then a small storage area made out of that lower-level space. And then upstairs, as I mentioned, some renovations in the office. The window area will be closed. There's currently a door into the main office that will also be closed to help with the flow of the building and the meeting spaces that we use, and that will make this into two offices here and then two workstations in the front area. Want to answer any questions you might have?
Okeydoke. Any questions for Julie? Full speed ahead, it looks like. Thank you, Julie. Would anybody else like to address Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move resolution.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Mims. Discussion.
Just want to commend city staff, not only obviously for the renovation, but this is, I don't know if this is the second iteration of remodel where we're looking at gender non-specific restrooms, but, you know, there's still, that's still being built in our community where we have gender-specific restrooms, and so for the city stepping up in that way, I just, I think it's, that was going to be my comment, and you answered it. So, I appreciate that.
Well, I think the additional visibility is really important, too. So, I think it's a good remodel use of space.
Yeah.
All right. Hearing, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item eight, Solid Waste Code Amendments for Cardboard Ban. Ordinance amending title, what is it, 16? Public Works, Chapter Three, City Utilities, Article H, Solid Waste, to prohibit landfilling of corrugated cardboard. So, I'd like to get a motion to waive second consideration to--
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion. I can, well, just on this, I guess there's no discussion, never mind. So, roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final adoption.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens. What I was on the verge of saying is I put a lot of cardboard into our recycling last night, really, a lot of cardboard. So, I'm very pleased to know that it's all, all of it's going to be recycled now and no longer be allowed to go to the landfill. Happy about that. You earlier asked a question about carbon on a different topic during our work session.
Recycling, yeah.
Yeah. So, I noticed there's information here about methane emissions associated with carbon in the landfill, and apparently this will reduce methane emissions quite a bit.
Correct.
And that's quite important from a climate, climate change point of view. So, I'm very happy to see that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final adoption.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens. What I was on the verge of saying is I put a lot of cardboard into our recycling last night, really, a lot of cardboard. So, I'm very pleased to know that it's all, all of it's going to be recycled now and no longer be allowed to go to the landfill. Happy about that. You earlier asked a question about carbon on a different topic during our work session.
Recycling, yeah.
Yeah. So, I noticed there's information here about methane emissions associated with carbon in the landfill, and apparently this will reduce methane emissions quite a bit.
Correct.
And that's quite important from a climate, climate change point of view. So, I'm very happy to see that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 10, American Legion Road and Barrington Road Speed Limits. Considerance ordinance amending Title IX, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Three, entitled Rules of the Road, Section Six, entitled Speed Restrictions, Subsection B, entitled Exceptions, to establish a maximum allowable speed of 35 miles an hour on American Legion Road between the intersection of Scott Boulevard and Taft Avenue, and amending subsection C, entitled School Speed Zones, to establish a 20 mile an hour school speed zone for Hoover Elementary School. This is first consideration.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, seconded by Taylor. Discussion. Well, like I said during the work session, it's extraordinarily important that we ensure the safety of children and escorts going to school, and especially in terms of crossing the road and walking along American Legion Road especially. So, of course, I'm very happy to see this, and Jeff, I know you wrote a memo to Steve Merly on this particular point, alerting him about what we were going to do.
Yeah, that memo will be in the school district's next board packet, as well as your Thursday information packet. And just a note on this particular item, our staff has also been working with the county, and we will, with their permission, which they have given us, also install some speed limit reduction signs east of Taft as well. So, we'll start to taper that speed even before the Taft intersection. You're not seeing that reflected in the item tonight because that's county property.
My grandson is a Longfellow Longhorn, as Rockne's daughter is, and so seeing this, he's going to be temporarily uprooted from Longfellow and going to the new-- he's going to be temporarily uprooted from Longfellow and going to the new Hoover, so I'm very happy to see this being done.
I wanted to ask one question. It has to do with a conversation you and I had maybe a week or two ago, I don't remember exactly, about the hill just to the east of the exit from the new Hoover school parking lot. And my experience coming out of that exit was that it's, the top of the hill is pretty close, so if cars coming at you at a rapid speed, you're at risk. So, I imagine you've had conversations about that?
Yeah, we did. We had staff take a look at that. Technically, it meets the visibility thresholds that we measure, but we are going to engage the school district to see if, while they're still completing some site work out there, they might be able to take a little bit off that grade. If not, we'll work, if they're not able to do so, I think we'll work to find a solution where we can improve that visibility a little bit. It is, I think it is a concern, but again, it technically does meet the visibility thresholds.
Okay. Thanks.
I would just like to add one thing, because the public hasn't seen Jeff's letter yet, and like you said, it will be in the school district's packet. Their next packet will be in our packet on Thursday. And I think it's, I would strongly encourage people to look at that letter when it comes out, either in the school district's packet or in ours. It really lays out, I think, in great detail, kind of the process that has been gone through since the city and the school district were working together to help the school district find property, and really the lead time that it takes the city to do capital improvement projects and major road construction and reconstruction. And, there is, there's a huge timing issue here where, in an ideal world, that road would be rebuilt before that school opens, with sidewalks and what we anticipate is a pathway underneath the road for kids to come from Windsor Ridge to the school. That just is not physically or financially possible to have gotten that done by the time the school opens. But certainly, the city is working, I would say, in as expeditious a manner as possible regarding both the physical and financial limitations, to get that done. And in the meantime, we'll do everything we can with the school district to cooperate and make sure that that is as safe as possible out there.
I wonder if it would be worthwhile having a short Channel Four, city cable channel TV segment on this particular topic?
Good idea.
We can do that. And, on a related note, on your next agenda, we expect to also be bringing you a school speed zone for the Mann Elementary, which we've talked about at this table before. We had hoped to bring that at the same time, but since it's a DOT route, there's a couple extra steps to take. But, we think for the first time, we'll be able to actually put a speed zone on Mann, I'm sorry, around Mann on Dodge with their permission. So, that's also in the works, and we'll have that done. And assuming you approve and collapse on the fifteenth, we'll be in place before school starts on Dodge as well.
Excellent. Any further discussion?
Okay. Really thrilled about that.
Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item eleven, artwork in Blackhawk Mini Park. Resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Iowa City Downtown District for temporary placement of artwork in Blackhawk Mini Park.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Batshuayi. Discussion?
Give a brief intro as well, and then Betsy Potter from the Iowa City Downtown District is going to go, walk you through this in more detail. But, you recall last year during the Washington Street Reconstruction process that the city contracted with the Iowa City Downtown District for some additional programming in the Blackhawk Mini Park area? You may recall some of their events. They had paddleboarding, a rock wall for a climbing event on a weekend, they did yoga, and a whole number of other events. We received great feedback from the businesses, from the public who participated in that. And so during the budget process this year, we included dollars to do the same thing with the downtown district. They're refining their approach this year. It's going to be a different set of offerings, and Betsy has been gearing up for that. So she's going to walk you through, I think, the bigger picture and what they're looking to do, programming-wise, and then talk specifically about the temporary art installation.
Good evening, Betsy. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thanks so much. Let me open this up really quick. Nope, that's Julie's. Oh, here we go. So, I hope that everyone has kind of noticed that we have started the Blackhawk Mini Park programming so far this year. The yoga started in June, and we've had a lot of success with that particular programming element. It's free, it happens on Sundays every single weekend. We work with Hot House Yoga to bring out an instructor. We have about sixty-five to seventy attendees each Sunday morning at ten o'clock, which is a really great attendance for the area, considering there's not much going on on Sunday mornings in that area already. We have the red chairs out again. This week, we've brought back out, actually for the last week and a half, the ping-pong table and giant Jenga sets, which we always hear really great feedback from. So, part of, so we'll keep on with the lighter, quicker, cheaper programming elements, and I'll kind of walk through those a little bit. But part of this also is about putting a temporary art installation in the space. And, you know, it was back in, I believe, I'll walk through the timeline, but there, back in January, we started this whole process with a community survey, kind of asking the community members what they wanted to see in Blackhawk Mini Park temporarily from July until October. And so that's, a lot of this is based on that community survey. And then additionally, we met with a lot of our key stakeholders, the Iowa City Public Library, and a whole bunch of other nonprofit groups and clubs around town that had been mentioned in the community survey. We met and we talked to them about what they'd like to participate in, what they would be willing to help us with, and how they would like to see Blackhawk Mini Park used. So, all of these ideas have come from those meetings and from those investigations. So, this is kind of how we started those, that survey and the workshop. We kind of explained the current existing conditions of Blackhawk Mini Park, that we learned a lot last year when we brought the paddleboarding in. We realized the drainage isn't so great, things that we should and shouldn't do in the area, things people want to see in the area, and things they don't really want to engage with. And so we learned a lot of lessons from that. And so these are the current conditions of Blackhawk Mini Park. And then, like I said, we started this whole process in January, when we first decided to define what we thought as placemaking as an organization, based on some research and conferences that we've attended. And then in February, we sent out the community survey, and we had a really great response from a lot of community members that were very open about if they even knew what Blackhawk Mini Park was. And that was our first question. About sixty percent of the survey results said that they did. Forty percent had no idea that the area was called Blackhawk Mini Park. And then after that, one of the questions on the survey, just as a reminder, was what organizations should we partner with in the community? So every single one that was mentioned in our survey, we invited to a larger workshop. And I think about sixteen of those mentioned partners showed up, and we walked through for about an hour and a half to two hours what they would like to see in the space. And so that's when we established our needs. And that's how we came up with three major components of the Blackhawk area that we would like to see this summer. Programming, the lighter, quicker, cheaper events that we are putting on. Temporary amenities, there's currently nothing in the space besides a light pole. And one of the biggest complaints is, we need shade, we need seating, we need, you know, things to make it feel safe, things to make us want to be there a little bit longer. And then by and far, about ninety-eight percent of the comments were based around art, and whether it be temporary art or art elements. So we kind of knew right there that we had to start focusing our energy on bringing some sort of art element to Blackhawk Mini Park for this pilot program that we're doing. So, this is kind of just going over those community results, but we are working towards now finding an art element for Blackhawk Mini Park. Following the community survey, or the community survey and the workshop, we then met with our art partners in town, so local artists and the Museum of Art and other partners that really wanted to help us define how we were going to bring art to the area. And, through that process, I think it was Public Space One had mentioned that it is a great thing to bring art to the area, but it needs to maybe have another component to it, because this space is really in need of shade and seating, and staging, actually. And so, we then reached out to a recommended artist, Hannah, and she's here, and she's going to go over our proposal today, to come up with a temporary art piece that would incorporate both shade, seating, and just be a real great conversation piece for Blackhawk Mini Park. So, that is where we're at right now. These are just like some of the lighter, quicker, cheaper, just to like, let everyone understand what we've done in the past there, and what we're working on. And then I will kind of turn it over to Hannah to explain the prairie box that we're hoping to put in the space. And it'll be there from, hopefully, August until October, and then it's temporary and it'll be removed.
Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you to Betsy and all of you for the opportunity to speak about this.
Please state your name.
I'm Hannah Givler. I'm an artist here in Iowa City, and I teach sculpture and design courses at the University of Iowa. I have a sculpture practice that includes the design and construction of architectural spaces, in part. I also do other things in that practice, but I believe that architectural space can convey meaning. I believe that it can contain ideas and share stories, and also affect social behavior and share history. And so, when I was met with the possibility of developing a proposal for this site at Blackhawk Mini Park, I thought about the current climate of sort of social anxiety on a local and national level, and thought what I wanted most was to design a space that would be welcoming and facilitate belonging. And so, from that, I developed, does this work this way? I developed a structure that's influenced by the four-square home, the American four-square, which is a Midwestern vernacular style that can be found here in Iowa City and across the Midwest. And, using this house form, I modified the design slightly so that every face of the building is an entrance. It has a porch with a shade and a swing for gathering. The American four-square was often distributed as a kit house, it could be ordered through a catalog. And, basically, mills and lumber mills in Iowa and in the Midwest would pre-cut a lot of the lumber for the houses and then ship them by railway to homeowners across the Midwest, who could then build that house by themselves, or hire a carpentry team at lower cost. So it was one of the most affordable homes of its time. In this case, the framework is very light, the interior is left intentionally open and flexible for opportunities of spontaneous or planned activity. Let's see. The thing that interests me also about the prominence of the porch in this structure is the hybrid dynamic of public and private space. A porch is both of those things, and I think it can challenge the notions we have about what it means to make oneself at home and public. Here I have included some specification drawings for a sense of scale, so it's twenty feet tall, thirty-four feet at its widest. So it's not the full scale of an actual house, but still quite large. And then, is ADA accessible? It has a ramp, so at the top of this image, you can see a ramp starts and comes to the middle of the platform. There are three stairways for entrance on the sides. And the structure itself is intentionally left light like a wireframe to sort of call back to its origins as a drawing. So, you'll see that line is basically metal square tubing, and there's an awning with a shade fabric, a wooden platform that's painted, and then the four swings. So, I think we're opening it up for questions, or is that right?
Hannah, what's the height of the base?
Twenty-two and a half inches. So that's...
So, it's pretty good for sitting on, I guess, and with feet on the ground?
I think the stairs would be, there's going to be a railing around the perimeter of the platform, hoping to keep people sort of safe if they're running across or playing, roughly.
Good deal. Well, is that it?
Yep, that's it for me.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Hannah or Betsy? Or any reactions?
I like it. Neat ideas of temporary things that drop people down, and the connection that this hopefully will bring to people, a place to sit and talk.
It's Iowa.
It's Iowa.
So how long will it stay up for? Like ninety days, or how long are we going to have it up?
Yeah, our hope is that we can start construction here soon, and then it'll stay up until the end of October.
Okay.
Yep, that's what the proposed timeline is. Good.
I really like the experimental nature of what the district has been doing, and this is just another instance of it. So I'd like to personally praise Nancy and everybody else for that. Also, I'd like to note that one Sunday morning, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, I just happened to be by myself. My wife Barbara was at a conference, and so I was downtown, and I noticed people doing yoga. And so I took a photograph of it and tweeted the photograph, and I thought it was really lovely and conveyed a very, very positive image of our downtown. So, yeah, I'm really happy about that.
I honestly had a different story in mind when you started. I thought you were going to, you know, you went out there and then you were the yoga instructor and everything else.
This Sunday, you can all join us.
Yeah.
I've done a lot of yoga, but no.
One quick question, Betsy. What about the lighting? So you talked about lighting, kind of in the initial presentation. Is that going to be incorporated in some way, shape, or form, or is it just the lighting that's there currently?
We don't have additional lighting at this point proposed, mainly because of cost and accessibility to that.
Cool.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Thank you, Hannah. All right. Anybody else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Batshuayi?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item twelve, aid to agencies. Resolution allocating human services aid to agencies, funding for fiscal year eighteen.
It's a resolution.
Could have a motion, thank you. Motion by MEMs, seconded by Batshuayi. Discussion? Good evening, Tracy.
Hello. I'm Tracy Hesey with the Neighborhood Services Office. Each year, we allocate, or the city allocates funds to local nonprofits. We go through a process every year. For several years now, we went through the United Way Joint Funding Process, which allows Johnson County nonprofits to use one application. So in one application, they can apply for Johnson County, United Way, Corville, and Iowa City funds. They mark on the application how much they're asking from each entity, and then each funder decides how much they fund each agency. So, we had applications, United Way accepted applications back in September. We received twenty-seven applications that asked specifically for Iowa City funds. HCDC reviewed these applications in January. They recommended funding of fifteen agencies. And typically, you would have seen those requests in May, but since part of the budget is made up of community development block grant funds from HUD, we didn't get a budget till, well, we didn't get a final entitlement amount until about June of this year. So, due to a slight reduction in funds, we had to lower everyone's allocation by less than one percent. So, that's why you're getting it now. I can ask, or I can, I'm here for any other questions.
Any question for Tracy?
Tough job.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion on the floor. Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. See, where am I? Got to look at the right thing here. Any further discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throck Morton.
Yes.
Botchway.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13, council appointments. All right, for these positions, applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. There are several positions that we received no applicants for, and we're going to re-advertise. And then, what, two appointments to the Housing and Community, no, one appointment to the Housing and Community Development Commission. So we have two vacancies to fill on expired terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy for a Jefferson Street representative to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission, and two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Telecommunications Commission. In all those cases, no applicants were, no applications were received. So we have to re-advertise. Where's the date? Yeah, I don't know. When do the applications have to be submitted by, Julie? I don't see that.
We'll have to re-advertise?
We'll be re-advertising, so August 1st is coming up pretty quickly. So it'll probably be that second meeting in August the 15th, I'm thinking.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. And then we do have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Housing and Community Development Commission. We received nine applications for that one position. There's no gender requirement. So what's your pleasure, folks?
I don't know any of them. I thought Claire Rose brought an interesting set of skills to it. She works at Pearson and stuff, and analytical background and stuff, but I...
I don't have the list in front of me, but there was someone from HBK Engineering. Do we have that name?
Maria Padron.
I mean, Maria. I support Maria. She called, and I was very impressed with her skillset background. I think she'd be a great addition.
Yeah, I thought, as far as I know, we don't have any Hispanic members to any of our boards or commissions.
Yep.
I was impressed.
There might be one person or something, but I was impressed by her application. She did make the phone calls, and I think she'd make a good appointment.
She had the urban planning background, Hispanic. She'd been in Iowa City over a year. Some of those others, I have a problem with when they apply for two, three, or four of them at the same time. And she seemed very interested in this position, and I was going to support her.
Yeah. Okay, sounds like we have agreement about that. So could I have a motion to appoint, first name's Maria?
Yes.
Maria Padron?
Thomas.
To the Historic Housing and Community Development Commission?
Moved by Taylor.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Botchway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Motion carries, seven, zero, whatever. Getting dizzy. Item 14, city council member appointment to the Senate, Senate, yeah, seats, paratransit. I'm not ready yet. That's pretty funny.
There's news that we need to share.
Well, yeah, somebody's going to resign unexpectedly, and Terry's going to be the guy, to the Seats Paratransit Advisory Committee. And Terry is currently our appointee to that committee, and he's generously agreed to serve to the end of his term on the council. And then we'll have to go through this again. So could I have a motion to appoint Terry Dickens with Pauline Taylor as the alternate?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, so we turn to...
We accept, could we accept correspondence? Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
13, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, could I have a motion to accept correspondence pertaining to the Housing and Community Development Commission appointment?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Botchway, seconded by Dickens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I'm sorry, Julie, I should have done that. All right, so now we're at, where are we? City Council Information, item 16. All right, where are we going to start? I can't remember where we started last time, so it'll be you, Kingsley.
Sure. So this weekend, I think you mentioned already in the proclamation, this ADA celebration from 10 to, wait.
10 to 12.
10 to 12, yeah, 10 to 12. So please show up. It's on the pedemol.
On the pedemol.
It's an important celebration. Coming up in two weekends from now, August 5th and 6th is the Soul Fest. Should be exciting. There's a lot of different opportunities to discuss, including an entrepreneurial panel, a black authors panel and discussion with some of the university folks, sharing their books and resources, a fashion show on the Friday night, and then some, you know, food and festivities, as they've always done with the Summer of the Art series. So if you have the opportunity, stick around and join in.
Thank you. Terry?
Friday night concerts, we have about six or seven weeks left, so make sure you get downtown every Friday night. Downtown's alive for, well, it's alive every night, but this is a really exceptional night that people get down. I saw a lot of people last Friday that said they hadn't been down in a couple of years and just happened to come down and really enjoyed it. Met with Fred Hubbell at Merge. Mark Nolte asked me to meet with him. There was a group of us there, some of the people that are with startup companies. He was very impressed with our Merge area, the city and ICAD, and it's a great community effort with the university, too. He was very impressed with it. And since then, he's announced that he is running for governor now. So at the time, he was thinking about it.
It's fortuitous.
Good luck to the Regina softball team. They're in the semifinals Thursday. I have two granddaughters on the team, so looking forward to them getting a championship to bring it back home.
There you go. Rockney?
I just wanted to extend a big thank you to everyone that helped organize the community barbecue out of Weatherby Park. It was a real tremendous success. We probably had 300 or 400 people that turned out. It was just a really positive event. And part of that was funded, actually, by our local foods budget. So also thank you to staff for working with Shanti Sells to make that happen. But in particular, I really want to thank James Adrian of Jimmy Jack's Barbecue. He volunteered to essentially cook all of the pork for free. And he also did a great, we picked pork together for about three hours, so we had a lot of good conversations about pulling pork and Iowa City and starting a business. So that was really great. And of course, a big thank you to Roy San Porter and Shanti Sells, who really made that event happen. And also, I feel like every time I report on my vacations, I was just in the city of Portland, and it was really fun to sort of see the skinny streets that they have there and how they sort of integrate that into their downtown. That's sort of what they're known for, really micro blocks. They do one ways that actually work. It works there because they have very small blocks and they have very skinny streets. So it's fun to hear a lot about a place and then to come back and actually observe it. But I tell you what, it's great to be home in Iowa City. We're really fortunate to live here as well, so.
Pauline, you want to go next? Nothing. John?
On July 9th, the Iowa City Community Band played at North Market Square, which is, you know, just music in the parks. It's different than the party in the park. This was a full-fledged band playing underneath the pavilion. And it was a hot day, but it drew a nice crowd. And we got a very positive response. I mean, it was clear that people were having a wonderful time. It was a little bit warm, but plenty of shade from the tree cover around the playground. So people had a wonderful time. Some people said, didn't know this was happening, but can we do it again? So we're hoping it's, you know, an annual tradition now that we'll have established.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah, nothing.
She was on vacation last week. She's still thinking.
Part of, part of last week.
Well, you could talk about that.
Yes, went to Vermont, so.
Yeah, good deal. I'll mention just three things quickly. One is that Jeff and I met with three leaders of the Congolese community back in early July. I found that to be a tremendously rewarding conversation and a very promising one, because we have a substantial number of Congolese refugees living in our community. And they have considerable difficulty trying to figure out how to fit in, partly for language reasons, partly for cultural reasons, and so on. And I think we really helped them figure out how to connect with city government and various things we can support and so on. So I was very pleased with that conversation. The second thing I wanted to mention is that I took a guided tour of the South Water Treatment Plant on the 6th of July. And it's a pretty impressive facility. And I imagine some, perhaps all of you have been out there before, but I did a tour back in 1995, I think, when it was, you know, it had been open for just a few years. And it's way bigger than it was back then, and it's an impressive operation. And I want to thank Roger Overton, Al Figueroa, and Steve Flake for guiding me around and helping me understand how that plant works. I took a photograph of some of our neighbors who do good work for us down there. And what I mean is there are microbes that consume waste and play a crucial role in that treatment plant. And so I think it was Al showed me a microscopic image of them as they were swimming around, doing what they were doing. And so I took a photo, took a photo of it and tweeted that, too, and thanked our neighbors for their good work. The last, no, the next last thing I want to mention is that we're going to have an Economic Development Committee meeting at 8:30 this coming Friday morning, which is July 20, the 21st, right? So Susan Rockney and Jeff and Wendy Ford and I will be present there. And it's an important meeting. I think we're going to take an extra half hour on this particular one. And of course, it's televised, so anybody who wants to see it can observe it on Channel 4. Plus, it's open to the public if anybody wants to come. The last thing I wanted to mention is, no, I wasn't on vacation, but I was out of town for several days. I was in Lisbon, Portugal. I was participating in a conference of the Association of European Schools of Planning, which I have done now, this is the seventh time I've done that over the years. So it's a connection I established back in 1991 with scholars in many, many different European countries. And it was a great treat being there. I enjoyed re-engaging with people I've known for a long time, meeting new people, including people from China who were there, and had very fruitful conversations with them. Plus, I got to tell you, Lisbon is a pretty sweet city. It's a very attractive place in many respects. And we had a pretty good party on the beach, looking out at the Atlantic as the sun was setting. And that was fun to do.
So it wasn't a vacation, then?
Yeah, we have a little, some of it was vacation. And just for the record, I paid for it myself. There's no city money involved in this.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, funny. Okay, Jeff, your turn.
Nothing.
Ashley?
No.
Eleanor, you were on vacation, too.
I can color out.
Julie?
No.
Okay, so I think we are at that point. We're going to get a motion to adjourn to the work session.
So moved.
Second.
By Botchway, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And we're done with the formal meeting.